Assalamualaikum Jee, welcome to see our conversations. Apa tahu kita punya konversasi ini untuk mencoba dan membuat pakaian rata-rata Pakistanernya memahami apa ekonomi A, ekonomi B, apa yang terjadi di masa lalu dengan ekonomi Pakistan? Karena kita sangat bingung tentang ekonomi dan kita sangat bingung tentang apa politik ekonomi itu. Dan kita tampaknya berpikir politik ekonomi adalah hanya mempekerjakan bankir dan membiarkan bankir mengarahkan ekonomi dan kemudian melihat ke Bank World dan IMF dan agensi lainnya untuk menyelesaikan masalah kita. Jadi saya mencoba mendapatkan orang-orang terbaik yang bisa berbicara tentang ekonomi. Jadi hari ini saya sangat senang untuk mengatakan, saya memiliki seseorang yang sangat ekonomis penting dari sudut pandang Pakistan, Khalid Dikram. Doktor Khalid Dikram, PhD dari Harvard, telah berada di banyak posisi, tetapi paling penting dari semua, dia adalah salah satu anggota pendiri Komisi Planning. Mungkin saya mengejajah sedikit, tetapi dia berada di Komisi Planning di lantai bawah. Dan dia melihat Komisi Planning berkembang menjadi institusi yang sangat penting. Dan dia tahu Mabubul Akhbar dan semua ekonomi penting di masa lalu sangat baik. Mereka semua teman personalnya. Jadi saya pikir Khalid sahabat, dan kemudian dia telah berpartisipasi, Pakistan selalu berpartisipasi. Mereka telah bekerja dalam framework growth, mereka telah bekerja dalam version 2025, version 2010. Banyak hal yang berkontribusi untuk mereka. Meskipun dia bukan seorang figur media, jadi Anda mungkin belum pernah mendengar tentang dia, tetapi mereka berkontribusi banyak. Yang kedua adalah bahwa dia berbelanja banyak di Bank World. Dan di Bank World, saya pikir Khalid sahabat adalah perbedaan bahwa dia bekerja di Korea dan di Egipt, antara hal-hal lain. Tetapi di keduanya, Egipt dan Korea, dia sangat dikenal. Dia menulis buku-buku tentang negara-negara itu, dan jika Anda ingin bertanya apa-apa tentang Egipt dan Korea, kami berbicara tentang Korea, mereka telah belajar dari kami. Khalid sahabat sangat mampu memberi Anda kebenaran. Nomor dua, sampai sekarang mereka dipersebut dengan respect terhadap negara-negara itu, mereka diberi panggilan, mereka berbicara. Jadi, biarkan saya bergerak ke Khalid sahabat sekarang. Khalid sahabat secara singkat menjelaskan bahwa Anda melakukan pekerjaan ini di Komisi Planning Pakistan, dan Anda melihat hari awal Komisi Planning, dan Mabubul Akhbar dan semua orang yang besar-besaran, yang kami pikirkan, kami tidak pernah berbicara dengan mereka. Biarkan Anda ceritakan tentang suasana di zaman itu, dan ceritakan tentang institusi itu, apa perannya di Pakistan pada zaman itu.
Nadim, terima kasih begitu banyak atas pengantarannya. Saya total tidak berhak untuk itu, tetapi saya akan menahan di sana. Biarkan saya melakukan ini, biarkan saya hanya memberi Anda survei singkat, sangat singkat dari awal dari planning di Pakistan. Dan kemudian lanjut untuk melihat apa yang apa kekurangan di dalamnya dan yang telah terus berlaku sampai sekarang. Beberapa dari mereka akan menjadi kenal dengan Anda karena saya maksud bahwa Anda telah mengisi Komisi Planning sementara saya dalam perjuangan melawan ini. Dan saya pikir kita dua telah bekerja keras untuk memperbaiki beberapa kekurangan ini dengan kesuksesan yang hanya bagian. Tetapi, jadi beberapa menit tentang sisi belakang dan kemudian lebih tentang tantangan lainnya yang diperhadapkan dan terus berhadapan. Mengejutkan, planning di Korea, di Pakistan, sebenarnya memiliki sejarah yang sangat panjang. Sejak tahun 1948, pemerintah mengatasi sebuah board perkembangan dengan referensi yang mengandung rencana perkembangan, rekomendasi prioritas, saya menganggap itu. Rekomendasi prioritas, melihat progres proyek-proyek perkembangan dan membuat rapport periode ke kabinet tentang progres proyek-proyek ini. Pada saat yang sama, ada sebuah board supervisory planning diciptakan. Badan ini memangsa anggota dan representatif dari sektor pribadi dan batasnya adalah untuk memandu pemerintah tentang asal-asli tentang planning dan perkembangan, termasuk kooperasi publik dengan sektor pribadi dan seterusnya. Ternyata, apa yang terjadi, maaf, setelah itu, kemudian ini terbentuk. Dan pada tahun 1954, Komisi Planning didirikan. Dan rencana pertama lima tahun dimulai dari tahun 1955. Sebenarnya, rencana pertama lima tahun, dokumen tersebut belum selesai sampai pada tahun 1957 atau 1958. Jadi saya maksud, itu tidak akan diperoleh. Biarkan saya membuka parthenesis. Namun, itu mengandung diskusi yang baik tentang masalah yang dipertangkap oleh pemerintah, yang dihadapi Pakistan dalam perkembangan. Sebenarnya, apa yang terjadi adalah ketika saya masih mahasiswa di Cambridge dan saya ingin menghabiskan musim panas untuk mempelajari masalah perkembangan. Saya bertanya kepada superviser saya, Joan Robinson, apa yang harus saya baca? Dan kecurigaan saya, dia tidak menawarkan buku atau artikel atau apapun. Dia mengatakan, hanya baca rencana Pakistan pertama dan rencana India pertama. Dan dia mengatakan, Anda akan mendapatkan diskusi komprehensif tentang masalah perkembangan di dalamnya yang lebih praktis daripada apa yang Anda dapatkan dari buku-buku. Itu tetap diskusi yang baik tentang masalah yang kita hadapi, tetapi itu benar-benar tidak memberi solusi. Jadi, dan ini tetap salah satu kekurangan, salah satu kekurangan utama dari planning di Pakistan. Rencana lima tahun kedua yang dimulai pada tahun 1960 lebih sukses. Tetapi dari tahun 1965, rencana ketiga dan rencana keempat dan seterusnya hanya terlalu dikandung oleh politik dan Anda tahu, hanya diperoleh secara bagian atau setengah atau apapun. Sekarang, biarkan saya bergerak ke enam masalah utama yang saya lihat telah menghadapi planning dan terus menghadapi planning sampai hari ini. Masalah pertama adalah bahwa di semua rencana yang dulu, saya maksud, termasuk yang telah kami siapkan untuk rencana Colombo dan seterusnya, kami berbicara tentang planning, tetapi sebenarnya rencana terdiri pada listat proyek sektor publik. Jadi saat kami berbicara tentang planning, saya maksud, semua yang kami hasilkan, sampai pada rencana lima tahun kedua dan bahkan rencana ketiga, hanya terkonsentrasi pada proyek sektor publik. Kekekurangan kedua adalah bahwa ada sedikit diskusi tentang politik dan apapun politik yang dibicarakan, dibicarakan dengan lebih umum daripada dengan cara fokus. Tiga, perhatian dengan sektor pribadi sangat lemah. Ada beberapa tindakan terhadap itu, tetapi tidak ada yang berbicara tentang mengurangi kebijakan pemerintah, misalnya seperti yang Anda anggap. Tidak ada yang berbicara tentang memberi insentif tertentu kepada sektor pribadi untuk mengatasi area belakang. Misalnya, pada saat itu, itu akan menjadi East Pakistan, tidak ada yang dilakukan di dalamnya. Jadi, peran sektor pribadi tenda menjadi tidak ada. Ada beberapa pernyataan ritual tentang pentingnya, pernyataan ritual tentang.
Tetapi di saat-saat itu, kami tidak hanya, kami tidak percaya pada sektor pribadi sama sekali. Apa yang kami pikirkan adalah semua harga, semua investasi investasi pribadi, semua itu dikontrol oleh lisensi, jadi tidak ada aktivitas pasar.
Benar, dan kemudian ketika ekonomi berkembang dan lisensi dan seterusnya menjadi kelemahan atau kekurang. Saya maksud, misalnya, di masa muda, Anda memiliki rencana investasi industri yang memeriksa seberapa besar plant akan menjadi, di mana akan ditempatkan, di East Pakistan atau West Pakistan dan cukup di mana di West Pakistan atau di East Pakistan dan ukurannya akan berapa dan seterusnya. Ketika itu terbentuk, kami tidak menempatkan sistem insentif dan disincentif untuk mengarahkan investasi. Kami hanya tidak tahu apa yang harus dilakukan. Tapi, dengan mengingat listrik saya, pertama, kami hanya berbicara tentang proyek-proyek publik daripada rencana lebih luas. Kedua, kami mengabaikan sektor pribadi. Yang lebih baik, yang lebih buruk adalah meskipun referensi komisi planning adalah bahwa itu akan memberi petunjuk ekonomi kepada pemerintah, sebenarnya ada sedikit input dari Komisi Planning ke banyak politik besar. Mobilisasi keuangan atau hal-hal seperti itu. Ministri yang berbeda seperti Ministri Perbendaharaan akan mengambil kaitanannya dalam mempersiapkan politik ekspor yang tidak realistis. Ministri Finansial akan mengambil kaitanannya dalam mempersiapkan politik mobilisasi resoursi yang tidak realistis. Dan tidak ada yang akan mengambil kaitanannya dalam menghaluskan disparitik ekonomi antara provinsi. Ada banyak, banyak upaya untuk melakukan itu. Jadi, saya berbicara tentang tiga. Koncentrasi pada proyek, mengabaikan sektor pribadi, input ke politik. Keempat, dan saya pikir salah satu kekurangan paling serius adalah yang Anda coba mengatasi adalah mengabaikan software pertumbuhan. Penyebabnya selalu ada brik dan motor, atau sangat besar brik dan motor. Dan software pertumbuhan seperti sistem insentif atau setup institusi diingat. Anda dapat melihat semua rencana, Anda akan menemukan hampir tidak ada diskusi tentang empat atau lima masalah software yang orang-orang menemukan sangat, sangat penting dalam perkembangan. Misalnya, tidak ada diskusi tentang peran burokrasi dan bagaimana membuatnya lebih efisien. Tidak ada diskusi tentang sistem keputusan. Dan saya maksud, bagaimana mempercepat kerjaannya karena itu memiliki dampak besar pada ekonomi. Entah itu senteni kontrak, kecepatan implementasi keputusan dan seterusnya, bagaimana mengatasi investasi. Jadi, software pertumbuhan diingat. Empat, lima, enam, tujuh, delapan, sembilan. Yang kelima akan adalah, dalam praktik, disparitik provinsi diingat. Dan kemudian kami mengatakan itu benar-benar, untuk menjadi jelas, sangat tidak adil. Dan hasil akhirat adalah kebangkitan negara pada tahun 1971 untuk masalah ekonomi. Karena East Pakistan merasa itu diambil dan tidak memiliki suara dalam perkembangan, itu mulai. Melihat perkembangan sejak itu, saya harus mengatakan bahwa narasi, narasi dari pengambilan membawa banyak kebenaran dalamnya. Karena jika Anda melihat performa Bangladesh, mata uangnya lebih kuat dari kita, reserve-nya lebih dari kita, ekspornya lebih dari kita, bahkan dalam cotton textile, untuk kepentingan Allah, mereka tidak menghasilkan atom atom. Partisipasi wanita dalam kerjaan juga lebih dari kita, hasil pendidikan dan kesehatan lebih baik dari kita. Saya maksud, seperti yang saya katakan, Julian Nawas menulis buku, saya mengatakan dengan kegigihan yang besar saya harus mengatakan bahwa hal terbaik yang terjadi ke East Pakistan adalah bahwa itu menjadi Bangladesh dan memiliki respon West Pakistan. Itu benar-benar menyakitkan untuk mengatakan itu, tetapi hasil, data mengarahkan kepadanya. Pencapaian yang kita miliki selama bertahun-tahun dari awal dari planning dan yang terus berlaku sampai hari ini adalah bagaimana Anda memerlukan disiplin planning pada banyak ministri, semua dari mereka malu tentang independensi. Dan Nadim, dalam praktik, saya bekerja untuk Bank World, untuk ministri planning di Korea, mereka memberi pelatihan untuk saya di Egipt, di Vietnam, Laos, dan beberapa lainnya. Dan dalam praktik, ada hanya tiga cara, tiga cara lainnya di mana ministri planning dapat memerlukan disiplin dari rencana oleh para ministri. Pertama adalah bahwa ministri planning menghancurkan para ministri lainnya. Ministri planning tidak hanya menjadi ministri planning, tapi dia adalah deputi prime minister. Ini di Korea Selatan, ini di Egipt, ini di Vietnam, ini di Laos, dan di Pakistan, ini tidak menjadi kasus. Anda, ketika Anda menjadi deputi chairman dari Komisi Planning, Anda memberi tahu saya tentang perjuangan yang Anda miliki untuk membuat yang lain tidak berjalan dengan proyek yang mereka miliki, tetapi tetap di dalam disiplin rencana. Saya bahkan dapat menawarkan anekdot ketika disiplin ini dihapus. Saya maksud, selama 15 tahun di Egipt, Madhar Badru pernah menjadi deputi prime minister di kewajiban planning dan kemudian dia menjadi prime minister. Setelah, itu Arti Fabe yang menjadi prime minister. Dan saya mengunjungi Egipt sebagai consultant, saya bertanya kepadanya, maaf, dia mengatakan untuk saya, dia mengatakan jika Anda ingin melakukan perubahan dalam manajemen politik ekonomi, apa yang akan Anda lakukan? Saya mengatakan, prime minister, masalahnya adalah Anda memiliki saya maksud, Anda tahu, satu ministri, ministri perdagangan akan mengatakan kita harus memiliki ekspor yang menghasilkan ekonomi. Dan kemudian di sisi lain, seseorang lain akan membuat tingkat exchange rate lebih tinggi. Anda benar-benar mengharapkan memiliki politik ekspor yang menghasilkan perkembangan jika berdasarkan membuat ekspor lebih mahal. Saya maksud, tidak ada koordinasi, Anda tidak memiliki deputi prime minister di kewajiban. Jadi dia mengatakan, jika Anda ingin mempilih salah satu dari para guys sebagai prime minister, siapa itu? Jadi saya mengatakan pria yang pria penuh kualitas sebenarnya adalah Yusuf Huswad. Jadi dia mengatakan, saya setuju dengan Anda, tetapi masalahnya adalah dia terlalu muda. Dan senior ministri tidak benar-benar menyukai ministri. Jadi dia mengatakan, saya memintanya untuk menjadi ministri koordinasi. Jadi saya mengatakan, oke, Anda tahu bahwa Indonesiawan memiliki ministri koordinasi, tetapi itu karena mereka tidak memiliki prime minister. Jadi Anda tahu, mereka tidak hanya meminta ministri, itu mengapa orang itu disebut ministri koordinasi. Tetapi itu cukup dipahami bahwa dia menghancurkan yang lainnya. Tetapi di Egipt, Anda mengatakan Yusuf adalah satu ministri diantara banyak, bagaimana dia bisa menjadi empat? Jadi saya bertanya kepadanya, saya mengatakan, oke, saya akan berucap dengan Yusuf besok, saya bertanya. Jadi saya bertanya kepadanya, saya mengatakan, bagaimana ini, maaf, dia tidak bernama ministri konveni. Bagaimana ini konveni? Dia mengatakan, itu sebuah ceroboh, dan saya berusaha dua kali meminta Arti untuk membiarkan saya keluar dari tanggung jawab. Jadi saya mengatakan, apa yang terjadi dalam praktik? Apa yang terjadi dalam praktik adalah karena saya tidak bisa memanggil pertemuan ministri, saya mengatakan itu, tetapi mereka mengirim sekretaris bawah, mereka mengirim orang level ketiga ke sana. Mereka tidak dapat memutuskan ministri untuk kesimpulan yang diambil di pertemuan. Jadi dia mengatakan, segala hal itu terjadi menjadi salah. Anda ingin rencana yang diperoleh, ministri planning.
Khalid sahabat, biarkan saya juga menghentikan Anda sedikit. Kami sudah terbiasa dengan cerita di Pakistan bahwa Korea learned planning from us. Apakah itu benar?
Tidak, itu tidak benar. Apa yang terjadi adalah pada tahun 1962 atau 1963, delegasi dari orang-orang planning Korea datang ke Pakistan. Tetapi itu karena mereka dirancang oleh dictator militer, dan Pakistan dirancang oleh dictator militer dan mereka ingin melihat bagaimana planning dapat efektif di bawah regime seperti itu. Tetapi mereka juga pergi ke beberapa negara lain, yang Pakistan tampaknya melewatkan. Sekedar ke ini adalah bahwa beberapa tahun kemudian, ketika Korea adalah, Anda tahu, jenis pemain poster perkembangan, Wasim Jafri diirim oleh Bank World ke Korea untuk melihat apa pelajaran Pakistan bisa dilihat dari mereka. Dan Wasim Jafri pada kembali mengatakan ini sendiri, dia mengatakan dia menemukan salah satu anggota delegasi yang telah mengunjungi Pakistan pada tahun 1962. Dan dia bertanya kepadanya, dia mengatakan, Anda tahu, bagaimana Anda mengatur ini? Dan orang Korea itu terkejut dan dia mengatakan, Mr. Jafri, Anda menanyakan pertanyaan yang salah. Pertanyaan yang Anda harus menanyakan adalah, mengapa Pakistan tidak mengatur untuk membuat miracle seperti ini? Karena Anda orang-orang berada diatas kami dalam semua metrik yang seharusnya dianggap. Jadi, sesuatu salah dengan kami, saya maksud, dan itu apa yang harus Anda pikirkan. Biarkan saya mengambil satu menit lagi tentang dua metode yang telah bekerja dalam memerlukan disiplin rencana. Yang kedua adalah bahwa kepala pemerintah mengatur fungsi planning di kantor front. Saya maksud, misalnya, organisasi planning Malaysia ditempatkan di kantor prime minister. Jadi ketika orang planning berbicara, dia berbicara dengan otoritas prime minister. Dan itu satu alasan yang mengapa ministri lainnya terjatuh di line. Sekarang, di Pakistan, dalam teori, saya maksud, Komisi Planning memiliki chairman dan presiden. Jadi itu harus berbicara dengan presiden. Tetapi Anda lebih baik daripada saya untuk memberi tahu saya betapa presiden mengambil kepentingan tertentu dalam planning. Jadi, ministri lainnya sadar tentang ini, jadi saya maksud, mereka tidak terjatuh di line. Yang ketiga dan terakhir, dan hal terkecil adalah bahwa Komisi Planning atau badan planning, apapun Anda sebutnya, Ministri planning, board planning, Komisi planning atau apapun, mendapatkan reputasi untuk expert ekonomi dan kedepan kepada prime minister atau kepala pemerintah sehingga ministri lainnya bersedia mengelola aspek tertentu dari pekerjaan itu. Sekarang, ini terjadi di Pakistan, contoh yang luar biasa adalah ketika mereka meminta Komisi Planning untuk mengaduk pengganti hutang eksternal di antara East, di antara Pakistan dan Bangladesh ketika Bangladesh menjadi independen. Saya maksud, benar-benar harus menjadi Ministri Finansil atau Bank Central, tetapi mereka semua setuju bahwa tidak, Komisi Planning akan cocok untuk ini, dan Komisi Planning melakukannya dalam satu tahun. Tapi ini jarang, saya maksud, Anda benar-benar ingin hal-hal ini terjadi, bukan karena seseorang, seorang ministri yang baik, Anda ingin itu terjadi karena aturan bisnis mengatakan bahwa ini akan terjadi. Oke, itu saja. Saya tidak bisa mendengar Anda. Nadim, saya tidak bisa mendengar Anda.
Oke, baik. Saya pikir itu sinopsis yang sangat, sangat baik tentang bagaimana hal-hal sekarang, dan Anda memasukkan banyak kaki ke dalamnya, dan kami memiliki banyak ide yang baik. Anda benar-benar benar, Ministri planning harus menjadi Ministri koordinasi, Ministri konveni. Tetapi mereka harus memiliki kekuatan untuk mengkoordinasi dan konveni. Ketika saya menjadi chairman, saya ingat ketika saya mencoba memanggil pertemuan, kami mendapatkan sekretaris bersama di sana. Dan mereka mengatakan, saya hanya datang untuk mendengar apa yang Anda katakan. Jadi saya maksud, hei, Anda tidak dapat mengkoordinasi ketika orang-orang hanya mendengar apa yang Anda katakan dan mereka berjalan dalam arah mereka sendiri, jadi itu baik. Tetapi saya ingin mengambil subjek lain. Waktu Anda di Komisi Planning, kami menyebutnya era golden planning. Anda ada, Mabubul Akhbar ada, Shah Javed Barki ada, dan banyak orang lain. Sangat terkenal Aswasa, Javed Aswar, Anda tahu, ikon bagi banyak dari kita. Ketika kita berjuang, kami melihat orang-orang ini, dan banyak ekonomi ada di sana, dan kami pikir ini adalah, saya sangat bangga dengan itu. Apa yang terjadi? Semua dari Anda meninggalkan hampir pada saat yang sama, kan? Dan apa yang terjadi dengan Komisi Planning? Apakah ada kapital manusia yang tersisa? Mengapa Anda pergi, dan pada saat yang sama, hal lain, apakah Anda benar-benar di kewajiban? Atau maaf, tidak, di kewajiban adalah kata yang salah, apakah Anda benar-benar di konsultasikan dengan benar atau hanya trofi wives?
Anda melihat, saya pikir Komisi Planning telah di konsultasikan dan konsultasikan sering tetapi juga tertentu batasan ditempatkan di dalamnya. Jadi, ditempatkan di dalamnya, jadi itu akan di konsultasikan, tetapi konsultasi akan menjadi atau pendapat akan diperoleh di dalam batasan yang ditentukan di luar Komisi Planning. Biarkan saya memberi Anda contoh. Saya maksud, kami mengelola secara luas untuk membangun tingkat pertumbuhan East Pakistan. Saya maksud, Anda tahu, membuat pertumbuhan berkumpul dengan orang-orang West Pakistan. Dan jadi untuk, ini untuk rencana ketiga, rencana lima tahun. Kami bahkan menghasilkan dokumen tidak official, yang dihentikan dengan cepat, saya maksud, yang Anda tahu, sebenarnya menunjukkan apa yang harus dilakukan. Untuk mengatakannya secara singkat, apa yang kami katakan adalah Anda harus membangun tingkat investasi di East Pakistan ke yang dari West Pakistan. Saya maksud, ini tidak akan menjadi kondisi yang cukup, tetapi setidaknya akan menjadi kondisi yang diperlukan. Jadi, kekuatan yang ada mengatakan, ya, ya, orang, Anda benar. Jadi, apa yang kita akan lakukan adalah, kita akan, dalam rencana, kita akan membagi investasi dengan setara antara East dan West Pakistan. Sekarang, apa yang dimaksud dalam praktik adalah bahwa investasi sektor publik dibagi dengan setara dan juga investasi sektor pribadi. Tetapi karena upaya sebelumnya telah mengembangkan infrastruktur di West Pakistan daripada di East, sektor pribadi akan bergerak menuju West Pakistan, tidak menuju East. Jadi meskipun di papan, alokasi investasi terlihat setara, dalam praktik, kami tahu bahwa sektor pribadi alokasi papan akan berarti mungkin 50% diperoleh. Jadi, investasi agregat akan di mana saja tidak setara. Tetapi masalah terjadi bahkan lebih buruk oleh batasan lain. Biarkan saya memberi Anda contoh konkrete. Kami mendapatkan bagian besar resoursi domestik melalui program PL 480, program hukum publik 480 dari US, di mana mereka memberi kami barang-barang, kami menjualnya dan menggunakan resoursi rupi untuk mendanai perkembangan kita. Oke, kemudian mereka mengatakan, oke, 19% dari resoursi ini akan perlu pergi ke kerja kerja bawah indus. Dan ini tidak harus dihitung dalam alokasi West Pakistan karena ini adalah penggantian investasi dan tidak investasi baru. Oke, kami total mengabaikan fakta bahwa semua efek multiplikator akan terjadi di West Pakistan sebagai hasil dari investasi ini. Kemudian, 6% dari ini akan pergi ke akan pergi menuju proses rupi untuk membangun Istana Mabah, kapital baru. Tetapi karena kapital di kapital kedua wing, ini tidak harus dihitung sebagai bagian West Pakistan juga. Kembali mengabaikan fakta bahwa semua bagian uang ini akan menghasilkan pendapatan secondary di West Pakistan. Dan 5% akan pergi untuk embassy Amerika dan yang tentu, yang ditempatkan di kapital, yang tentu ditempatkan di West Pakistan. Jadi Anda memiliki 6 plus 5 plus 19, 30% dari resoursi PL 480 pergi ke West Pakistan tetapi tidak dianggap dalam alokasi West Pakistan, saya maksud, dalam hal yang dibilang 50-50. Jadi, Anda memiliki bonus investasi ke West Pakistan dan Anda memiliki fakta bahwa investasi sektor pribadi di East Pakistan hanya akan berada di pada akhirnya setengah atau setengah-tiga dari apa alokasi papan. Dan kemudian kami mengejutkan, mengejutkan, tingkat pertumbuhan tidak naik.
Sangat baik, saya mengatakan, tunjukkan saya.
Jadi itu apa yang saya maksud, Anda mengambil pendapat, tetapi Anda menempatkan batasan pada itu yang akan membuatnya tidak efektif.
Oke, tunjukkan saya sekarang, apakah ada tensi antara burokrasi dan Anda? Saya melihat, misalnya, Mabubul Akhbar ketika dia kembali ke Pakistan. I noticed, for example, Mabubulak, when he came back to Pakistan in nineteen, whatever, when Jawalak's time.
Yeah.
And he tried to fit in, he wasn't allowed to fit in. He was pushed in the Planning Commission and he was not listened to. He never became the financial minister that he wanted to. And then he ran away from the country to spend the rest of his years in New York. So was there, to begin with, let's say, the economist group, which you people were, and the bureaucrats group, was there a tension between you and has it grown over time or?
Uh, uh, not, not all the time. It varied. I mean, but there certainly was uh tension because the economists were generally kept at a lower level than the bureaucrats. I mean, you know, uh, no chief economist became a secretary, for example. I mean, uh, that, uh, you had joint chief economists, which actually had the same uh rating, whatever it was, grade twenty or something in those days, as a division chief did. And the division chiefs would be much better qualified than the joint secretaries, for example. I mean, um, most of them had PhDs and so on, but uh you never, uh, you never equal them. I mean, speaking from a personal level, I'll tell you two stories. Uh, one of them was, uh, I was deputy chief in the International Economics Section of the Planning Commission. And uh my chief was appointed, uh, Javed Salim Khan. Now, Jave- Jikki, as we called him, was a good friend of mine. And we'd been together at Cambridge, but what happened is that in his first year, he got a third. And so was asked to leave economics and do something else. So his degree was in geography. But here he was, uh, by, uh, by boss. So he came over and he said to me, Khalid, look, this is, because he was CSP. I mean, uh, so he said to me, Khalid, this is one of the oddities. But rest assured that I will never second guess you or try to act as your boss. So I said, Jikki, not only are we friends, but I'm quite comfortable in my skin. If you try to boss me, I will tell you that bugger off, I mean, you know nothing about economics. So he, he started laughing and he said, all right, fair enough. I mean, then another chief who was appointed over me was Satar, Abdul Satar, East Pakistani, who again had had his one year foreign training in Cambridge, and I knew him from there. We were friends. In fact, when he, he was married to an English woman. And when they went out of town, they would leave their two sons, uh, you know, half English sons, half Pakistani kids with us. So they were friends. And I remember once I was working to a tight deadline and Satar walked in and he said to me, he said, Khalid, can I, what can I do to help? And I was considerably stressed out at that time. So I looked up at him and said, Satar, if you really want to help, go away to Burban and play golf. And I mean, uh, let me get on with this. So he went off to Burban and played golf. I mean, and no hard feelings. But what I mean is that if I didn't have this kind of uh friendship with these guys or self-confidence or a thick skin or something, I would feel damn frustrated.
But tell me, when I look at, when I look at India, and you know the Indians very well, you knew Manmohan Singh, you knew Walia, you knew them very well, Monte Caluwalia was with you in the bank. But I noticed, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, ki- in India, Manmohan Singh brought a lot of economists with him. Not just, but lots of economists with him, Rakesh Mohan, um, and Arvind Virmani, lots of people went there, Pranoy Roy, many people. Later on, Skoshik Basu. How did Indian economists gain an edge over the bureaucrats? Because Indian economists are very influential in making policy in India.
You see, I mean, this may sound like a strange thing, but I think that intellectual excellence has a higher recognition in India than it has in Pakistan. In Pakistan, it's much more an issue, a question of, I mean, and I'm not even talking just in government and so on, in the private sector and other places. Whom you know is more important than what you know. And uh in the, the Indian Planning Commission, I mean, it was, uh, they had outstanding economists. One problem in Pakistan was that we couldn't harness the best uh East Pakistani economists. They preferred to work in East Pakistan. And I mean, Anithur Rahman and Nurul Islam and Rahman Subhan and, I mean, you know, many of their outstanding names uh preferred to stay in East Pakistan.
Let me just, let me just say this here. Would you agree with me if I said that East Pakistan, the creation of East Pakistan, was al- almost helped or facilitated or midwived by these economists? They built a very good case for Bangladesh being inferior to West Pakistan. And that's what facilitated the whole narrative. Would you agree with me there?
I would totally agree with you, yes. You see, the point is that the main grievance in East Pakistan was economic. So that was buttressed by and, uh, you know, uh, given evidence for it by the economists. There were
Why did those not economists, why did you not bring them into the Planning Commission? A, and B, let me also ask you that somehow the Planning Commission, and, oh, sorry, let me also get back. In nineteen seventy-three, the Planning Commission, uh, when, what is that guy's name who went to Brussels? In fact, um, he's related.
I'm sorry, I didn't get this bit. In nineteen seventy-three?
Nineteen seventy-three, the Planning Commission Deputy Chairman was a bureaucrat named Kamral Islam.
Yes.
And Kamral Islam had a disagreement with um the finance minister or maybe, maybe even the prime minister. And he, he left. And for five years, there was no deputy chairman. There was only the finance minister, um, I've forgotten the name.
Uh, Dr. Mubashar.
Dr. Mubashar. So was there, was there a big rift between the Planning Commission and the Ministry of Finance then? And I think this is about the time that you guys left too.
Uh, well, the, the, the exodus started there, at that, at that time. Uh, you see, at that point, what happened was that before that, there used to be tension between the finance ministry and the Planning Commission. But it is, it was more in the nature of creative tension. That the Planning Commission would be trying to push things up. I mean, growth rates, revenue collection, investment incentives and so on. And the finance ministry would be trying to pull them down. Uh, and the, the, the finance ministry was woefully, woefully uh, um, unqualified on the economic side. But because the finance minister uh was a powerful figure, I mean, it's not as Dr. Mubashar, I mean, who was a political figure. But uh, uh, he was an engineer by training, I mean, and uh, think, let me give you an example. When we went, uh, this is for the third five-year plan. Uh, we were discussing with the planning, with the finance ministry, uh, question of what revenue projections one should make. And we had done some elaborate calculations of the elasticity of various taxes. I mean, you know, income tax would be on income and the import duties would be on the growth of imports and so on and so on and so on. And we had these meetings with a Joint Secretary from the Ministry of Finance. And we said that the elasticity of, let's say, income tax would be uh one point three. And yes, he said, I agree, the elasticity of something else would be one point two. Yes, I agree, elasticity of something would be one point five. Yes, I agree. We were surprised that, I mean, there was no discussion, no argument, no holding back. And so they say, all right, so I mean, you've agreed to all these elasticities and you've given the projection of the underlying variable on which the, uh, response of the tax response was based. So then the tax collections of income tax should be based, uh, should amount to so many crore rupees for import, uh, import duties would be so much, for excise taxes would be so much. No, 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 he said. So he said, but you've just agreed to the elasticities. So he said, what is elasticity? I mean, you know, so when we explained this to him, he said, if this is elasticity, I don't agree with it. So he said, what the hell did you think was elasticity? He said, I thought that was the rate of growth. So he, he, he thought that import taxes would be one point three percent. Yeah, that's fine.
Let's go in another direction. I remember, uh, let's go in another direction. I remember about fifteen years ago, you wrote a paper on reforming the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I did.
Can you please tell us what your thoughts are and how can we improve our planning process? Or for example, Modi has killed the Planning Commission. Especially Modi has not killed the planning, he's made into a think tank. And Modi has killed the PSTP. Now, how do you, what's your plan and how do you see the Modi plan?
You see, the, uh, the Modi plan, in a sense, is moving towards, in practice, what the Koreans move to. I mean, I, for ten years, I ran the World Bank Economic Program in Korea. And uh, you know, there's this, they had a deputy prime minister who was in, okay, let me say. The Korean cabinet at that time consisted of twenty-three ministries, twelve of which came under the Deputy Prime Minister for Economic Affairs and only eleven under the prime minister as such. And even these eleven were not really under the prime minister because the defense, uh, internal security and foreign affairs really were run by the president. The prime minister was really to balance the ticket between different regions. The economic ministries, the twelve of them, met separately under the Deputy Prime Minister and they reached a decision, which was then presented to the full cabinet, which rubber stamped them. Now, this rubber, this focusing on, on economic issues separately by economic experts and then being rubber stamped by the cabinet at large, actually was an old tradition. Because even before you had a deputy prime minister for Economic Affairs, uh, in the Blue House, which was, you know, the president's office and residence in Korea, eighty percent of his staff focused on the economic side. And they reached a decision and the cabinet just rubber stamped them. So the economists in uh Korea, which was a marvellously successful country, uh, and I'll spend one minute on it, uh, in, in a minute, were all the time given preeminence in economic matters. Now, uh, you see, then let me tell you, they're very pragmatic people. As the economy expanded and became much more complex, you had these conglomerates like the Chebals, like Hyundai, Deu, LG, which in those days was called Lucky Gold Star, I mean, the merger of Lucky and Gold Star, uh, LG, Samsung and so on and so on. I mean, these became dominant. And it would be ridiculous to say that the Planning Ministry had either the expertise or the clout to run, to tell them what to do. So the Deputy Prime Minister uh, and a very, very able minister of planning, Kangbang Yun, who afterwards became Finance Minister, later on Foreign Minister, uh, very able guy. Uh, he uh said to me, look, what would be your advice about coordinating things now? And I said to both of them, I said, look, your plan is put together by thirty-two committees. And these are all government committees. So in the new setup, the economic setup, they'll carry no conviction with the private sector, which, let's face it, is what you need to grow if you, because that's the sector that provides employment, that's the sector that provides exports, that's the sector which provides innovation and technology and so on, not the government. So if that sector has no confidence in your plan, I mean, uh, how the hell do you expect to implement your plan? So he said, what is your suggestion? I said, my suggestion is that you appoint chairmen uh for all these committees from the private sector or from non-government sources. They can be think tanks, they can be universities, they can be uh, you know, commercial conglomerates, whatever you like. And uh, half the membership of the committee should be from non-government sources. Uh, let's think about it, they said. The next day, the Deputy Prime Minister, Kim Manji, telephoned me and he said, Mr. Kram, we've discussed your proposal, but we can't do it because Korean law demands that the committees be headed by government officials. Okay, I said, then you have a problem, uh, dear Prime Minister, dear Deputy Prime Minister, and you better think about it. Two days later, he called back and he said, Mr. Kram, we've thought about it. And we've discovered there's nothing in the law that says you can't have co-chairmen who are not from the, uh, from the government. So what we decided is that all thirty-two committees will have chairman, co-chairman who are non-government and half the membership will be from the non-government sources. And they proceeded to do that. So uh, what I mean is that they were looking for solutions, not looking for ways to entrench the government in the, on the economic side. Which, uh, now, actually Kamral Islam was one of those government officials who, in addition to being extremely able, knew his limitations. And uh, he would actually turn to economists very freely uh, for advice and think, again, let me give you a personal example. So I'm sorry, I'm taking up time with these personal anecdotes, but I, I don't know of any other way to substantiate what I'm saying. After uh Bangladesh came into existence, uh, there was a serious problem about dividing the external debt. Because Bangladesh said, we are not going to pay it, get it from Pakistan. And Pakistan wanted to say, we are not going to pay Bangladesh's share of the debt. Because in law, Pakistan was the success state. So if Pakistan didn't pay it, Pakistan was defaulting. And all the donors had in their aid legislation clauses that said that if a country defaulted, it's got no more aid. I mean, for example, in the US, it was section three twenty-Q of the Foreign Aid Act. So here we were bankrupt because we had lost lots of war. We had provided the Indians with one hundred thousand prisoners of war, seventy-five thousand army and twenty-five thousand civilians. We had lost the main source of foreign exchange. Uh, and we were teetering on the verge of bankruptcy. And here were some people and cabinets sticking out their chests and saying, to hell with the creditors, we won't pay. I mean, did, they, they were not acting like grown-ups. So anyway, one day Kamral Islam called me in and he said, Khalid, the, there's been tremendous battles in cabinet. Uh, there've been hardliners like Jay Rahim and Dr. Mubashar and, you know, one or two others, who've been saying, uh, you know, hell no, we won't pay. And I and one or two others have been saying that, uh, look, we have no option. The least bad option is to assume responsibility for the debt and to find some way of tidying over until we can get a separation, a de-jurice. And he said, I want you to take charge of it. So I was stunned. And I said, but sir, A, I've never done this sort of thing before. I mean, I'm chief international economics, but I've been dealing with exports and imports and foreign aid and so on. I've never handled this debt question before. And secondly, there are lots of people who are senior to me. I mean, you've got joint chief economists, you've got chief economists, you've got joint secretaries and additional secretaries and secretaries and God knows what else. And their noses will be put out of joint if you put me in charge of this. And his response was, he laughed. He said, Khalid, A, no one in the Pakistan government has handled the issue of, of external debt. So you are no disadvantage compared to anybody else. And secondly, uh, that it would delight me like anything to put these guys' noses out of joint. He said, you can't imagine how delighted I would be because they are not capable of handling this. And if they're just relying on their status to be given this position, I'm not one who's going to give it to them. Although they are CSPs and, uh, and I'm CSP and whatever else. I'm not one who's going to give it to them, although they are CSPs and I'm CSP and whatever else. And he said, Mr. Bhutto, the prime minister, has given me carte blanche to hire any international legal firm that we need to handle this question, to help us with this question, and any international economist as consultants. So, I'm giving you carte blanche. So, I said, sir, but okay, thank you for the confidence. But the fact is that unless I know what to do, I don't want a consultant. I mean, what am I to tell the consultant to do? Otherwise, the consultant will be telling us, you know, what our policy should be. But this should be the other way around. I mean, we should have a policy and ask him to help us to implement it. So, the rest of story is, you know, a bit long and I won't bore you with it here. But, so Kamru Islam took a very flexible view of this, a very realistic view, that the goal had to be achieved and the path towards the goal, well, he would, you know, negotiate with the devil if need be to do it.
But tell me, return to Modi, what Modi has done in the planning commission and what your ideas of the planning commission were ten years ago? And what is your solution now? What would you do now? For example, I would argue, some people would argue, let's close the planning commission down. That could be an option. The others would say, reform the planning commission. So, you tell me, do you want to close down the planning commission or if you want to reform it, how would you reform it?
Well, I would reform it into making it more on the lines of the think tank. The problem to the planning commission is that for the last, I guess, twenty-five years at least, there's been no replenishment of its expertise. I mean, that the human capital has not been replenished. What we had, I mean, and here Mehboobul Haq should be given the credit for that is, that he was de facto chief economist, even though we had a different chief economist. We had ML Kureishi, for example, to begin with, who was a chemist. But Mehboob would be, he was chief fiscal and monetary section at that time, but he would de facto chief economist. But A, he had the sense to see that in our society, age and seniority had to be respected. So, he always kept ML Kureishi in the loop in whatever he was doing. And ML Kureishi had the good sense to understand that there are many things about the economics that I don't know and will never know. So, so long as his dignity was preserved, he didn't object to the different de facto arrangement functioning. And then he went after to become head of PID. And, you know, so, so, A, Mehboob had the sense to act diplomatically and keep his eye focused on the end result. This is what we want, not on egos and so on. The second thing he realized was, and he told me, he said, he inherited this from Zayed Hassan, who was our first governor of the central bank. He said he was a great institutional builder and, Zayed Hassan. And as institutional builder, he kept on getting people trained because he said that the human capital of the state bank was the most important thing. That, so Mehboob arranged with the Ford Foundation and the Yeshia Foundation and, you know, various other things, USAID or whatever it was called in those days and so on, to send two persons, three persons every year abroad for training. I mean, if you got entrance for a PhD, you did a PhD. If you didn't, you did a masters and you would come back and you have, you know, you went to that programme, you had a PhD. And I mean, you know, so, you were part of the great thing, people who then contributed to Pakistan's economic stock of knowledge. I mean, PID you'd headed, planning commission you headed and so on. I think that the government and the country reaped its reward from having got trained. It reaped in manifold. And so, one can think of Mikal, me, Javed Hamid, Javed Azhar. I mean, Surtaj Aziz even also, I mean, numerous people like that. But those programmes haven't existed now for twenty-five years.
No, they do, no, they do, Khalisab, they do. They do. The government is sending about ten thousand people on scholarships overseas. Except, now, now they send them to the third-class universities of the world. They send them to really poor universities all over the world. I mean, France has a lot of these poor universities. Austria has a lot of these, all kinds of countries have these third-rate universities and our people go there and they come back with a PhD and their doctor's degree and that's it. But let's come back to this. How would you reform the planning commission now? How would you move it forward? How would you change the planning commission? Or shall we kill it?
No, you see, killing it won't serve much of a function because, because this coordination function has to be done.
But planning commission is not doing it. And can't do it, and it can't do it.
Well, much of it, it can't do, much of it is not permitted to do. I mean, because, for example, what I would do in the planning commission, I mean, as a practical measure now, in the short run, short to medium term, because A, I will start building up the human capital by sending them to decent universities and they don't have to get PhDs. I mean, basically what you need at this level, if you come in with an MA or something like that from a good local university, maybe a government college, Doha, FC College, Doha, you know, that sort of thing. What you need is a course in development economics, just to see what the rest of the world thinks of development economics. Because you would get an idea much more of the importance of the software of growth. That of the importance of institutions, the importance even of culture, I mean, I mean, development culture. So, you would need a course in that. You would need a course in quantitative economics. Because I mean, here, again, even when I was in the planning commission, this was a huge weakness in the planning commission. People couldn't quantify their thoughts. And if they couldn't quantify them, then they're pretty useless for planning. So, you would need that. And I would say that's pretty much it. You can get that in a year.
So, tell me, should we get rid of the PSTP? Because the planning commission is just a PSTP manager. And the way the PSTP now is structured is fifty percent of it goes to MNAs who spend it on political projects for the getting re-elected and fifty percent is spent on.
I would stop that completely. It's a boondoggle and an extremely corrupt instrument. Because I don't, has anybody done a review of what was done with the PSTP money?
Yeah, I have. And it seems that the PSTP money is a waste. For example, PSTP money does not catalyse private investment. The elasticity is very, very low. In fact, sometimes negative. For example, the PSTP money does not correlate with growth. The elasticity is very, very low. So, the PSTP money, as far as I can see, is useless. And the second thing is that the PSTP has set up an incentive system in all the government that everyone wants a PSTP project. And there's another issue. We make PSTP projects. We complete them. But it's a brick and mortar thing. Take, for example, universities. They're setting up universities in every district, but the university is brick and mortar and there are no professors. So, for example, I'll give you another point. We have made a hundred stadiums, but there are no games. In fact, stadiums can't even be rented for games. So, I think we have built a lot of stuff that we really do not get the maximum yield from. So, I say we have assets, but we don't get a return from them. So, should we?
Nadine, we suffer from what one called an edifice complex. I mean, that you set up a hospital, but you have no doctors. You set up a school, but you have no teachers and so on. I mean, even when I was doing an economic report on the Punjab for Mr. Shabha Sharif, we had a discussion, an informal discussion on education. And he said, well, you know, why should the rich get HSN college? We should have an HSN college in every district. So, I said, Chief Minister Saib, I mean, Khalisab, that's a very noble idea. And I mean, Alhamdulillah, we hope that happens. But do you have teachers to staff? HSN college level people, HSN level institutions in every district? And have you got any estimate of how, what it would cost to do that? Silence. You know, this is, this idea that you set up. I, this leads me to one other point that I want to make. That, and again, it comes back to the point that you hopped on so many times about, you know, projects versus policies. When Surtaj Aziz, you know, I knew Surtaj Aziz from the time he was in the planning commission. And when I was doing consultations for USAID and DEFED and the World Bank or whatever, I used to come to Pakistan five times a year. And each time I would have a one-on-one lunch or dinner with Surtaj. And one day he said to me that, he said, I hear that the chief minister, I will not name him, is really not doing such a great job with the economy of this province. And why? Because he really has a tremendous reputation as a doer. And I said, Surtaj, you are getting two things mixed up. He has a tremendous reputation as an implementer of projects and a deserved reputation for that. He is really very good at it. But these projects, by their very nature, tend to be win-win activities. Supposing you make a road from A to B, well, the contractor who builds the road benefits. The people, the motorists who use the road benefit. The houses which line the road on both sides benefit, the value goes up. And especially if the road is paid for by foreign aid, which we just tack on to as one more loan, it increases our debt and so on. But nobody really pays much of it. It's a win-win situation. This sort of thing appeals to a politician. But policies by their nature tend to be, tend to have trade-offs. If you give X a concession, then you have to make that up by taxing Y more. Or you have to think, and politicians don't like that because they want to make everybody happy. And the only way they can make everybody happy is by taking an external loan. I mean, that, so, you will find that most politicians are lousy at policymaking. Not because they are ignorant, but because it doesn't pay them to implement these policies. But they are quite good at doing projects. Because projects enable them to buy political support in this district or whatever. I remember some years ago, what was it, two thousand fifteen or something? This was, he did a study of the throw-forward of the Public Sector Development Programme. And he found, I mean, you know, you may have done one after that, but I remember the figures from that, that at the current rate of implementation, if you added no more projects to the portfolio, it would take something like eleven years to just complete what is, I mean, we start a project, we cut a ribbon, we pat ourselves on the back and do no more about it. And let me give you one more instance, a horrific one. When I was doing the development report for the Khaygar Pakhtunkha, I went there about five, six times a year. I mean, I was there every other month. So, I got to know a bunch of businessmen and others quite well. And one day over dinner, I told one of them, it was Nauman Wazir. He was a retired air force group captain or something from the engineering side who had an engineering, a light engineering and steel rerouting mill in Peshawar. I said, Nauman, for God's sake, stop moaning about, you know, the lack of good quality engineers, the lack of this, that and the other in your province. Tell me concretely, what is the problem? Are you telling me that Patans in some way are mentally deficient? And I said, which I don't believe for a moment, but tell me, is that the reason? Or is the syllabus for engineering out of whack? I mean, is it to, is it obstruse or is it the laboratory and other facilities are lousy? Or are their professors idiots? I mean, what is it? And tell me what it is. And unless you've come to me with this kind of data and this solutions, please don't sit down and ruin my dinner by moaning over to me about it. So, he said, okay. So, three months later, I was back and over dinner, Nauman said to me, he said, Khalid, I've got the answer. Okay, I said, give it to me. He said, the answer is the division of expenditure into developmental and non-developmental. Putting up an engineering college is developmental, that staffing it is non-developmental. And see, so he said, what I worked out, sorry, so he said, the students that come here are as bright as anybody anywhere in the world. You're quite right. Patans are as bright as anybody, I mean. Secondly, with the HEC permitting hiring from anywhere in the world, we've got PhDs from all over the world who are teaching engineering over here. So, the professors are fine. They tell me that the syllabus is fine. And they tell me that the laboratory equipment is fine. I mean, you know, it may not be MIT quality, but it's certainly, you know, Bristol and Essex and Sussex and that sort of university level, which is, you know, top-class university, but not necessarily at the cutting edge of everything. But they're good teaching universities. So, that's not a problem. The problem is that the, there's a very tight control over what is considered non-development expenditure. And the way it affects us is that the raw materials that the engineering student has to work or do practical work on would allow him to work on this practical stuff for twenty-seven minutes in the year. So, he said, by the time he graduate, he's forgotten which switch is on and which switch is off. And we have to, you know, when they come to us, now us, he was speaking as his engineering firm, we have to train them from the beginning. And he said, I'm damned if I'm going to train this guy from the beginning and pay him what he thinks he's worth. Because the minute I train him, he's going to scoot off to the Gulf or he's going to scoot off to some other competitor. So, either he comes to me knowing which switch is on and which lever is off, or I don't hire him. And I come to you and I moan that I can't get the human resources. That's the problem.
Thank you very much. But quite frankly, I feel that we haven't even sort of kind of felt out the subject yet. There's a lot of more.
No, no, we have scratched the surface.
There's not more to talk to you about. But what I do is I tell most people, we'll do follow-ups. Because everybody needs a certain medicine. So, inshallah, at some stage, we will revisit this. As a last, as a last question.
No, no, I'm sorry. I opened up, this is a never closed date. Now, let me consider it closed. If you have two minutes more, I'll tell you what if I were the P chairman, I would do for the short run. I would take a hard look at the intellectual capacity of the staff and the technical training of the staff. And I would divide the economic and others into two broad sections. One section, its terms of reference would be that give me two or three interventions to make on every paper and every summary that's going to the cabinet, every economic summary. So that on the cabinet, I can make two or three or one or two sensible interventions. I mean, whether it's housing, whether it's trade, whether it's, I mean, you know, what have you. And the other section will focus on longer-term issues. Their remit will be to give them, for them to give me something sensible to say once in six months or twice in six months on longer-term issues. I mean, how, what should our urbanisation strategy be and how would we implement that? You know, should we have a mortgage policy, you know? And, you know, how would that be run so that the mortgages only go to the rich? I mean, and so on, you know, sort of longer term. And that's all. I mean, and so on, you know, sort of longer term. And that's all. I wouldn't bother about uh having so many sections. I would just take the best staff from them and put them in these two. So what would happen is with my sensible interventions, every uh. Uh you know, to a couple of sensible interventions on every economic item. In due course, the prime minister would automatically turn to me for advice on issues. Because I'm being the grown-up in the room, I'm being the sensible guy, making constructive remarks on matters brought. Economic matters brought to the cabinet. And every six months, I would make two or three very sensible, long-term remarks, which would help. And at the same time, I would be sending people out for the one-year training of the economic matters. And quantitative matters that we need. And they would come back and serve for five years or whatever is agreed upon. I mean, over there. So I would be building up the human capital, but at the same time, demonstrating my utility to the cabinet.
Dr. Bhotbhot, shukriya. What we'll do is, we'll, we'll do a follow-up, couple of follow-ups, maybe more. We'll do a follow-up a month or so later. This discussion, I think you are eminently, with both subjects we haven't touched. You are eminently qualified to open up the minds of our students. My focus in doing this is really to reach out to the young people, bridge the gap so that they find out what our older generation did. Even though we failed, we failed, I agree, I admit my failure. But the point is, I think the youth must know that what people tried, how they tried, and I think you've given us an eminent summary just now. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart and Insha Allah, we'll do this again.
Nadeem, it's always a pleasure discussing things with you and we can discuss, I mean, if you're interested. Particular things like, what did Korea do to get the export? That growth, I mean, that's all concrete things, not just a wave of hand and say we'll do.
I want to, actually, I want to actually discuss your book on Korea. I want to discuss your book on Egypt. And I want to discuss so many other things. I want to discuss Mehboobul Haq, for example, with you. I want to discuss the card with you. I want to discuss all these people. So there's a lot more to talk about. I just want to cut it now so that we have, we can do it later. Thank you.
No, no, fine. Okay, all the best. And thank you for the having me here. Bye.